Hi, wow, y'all just popped up. How are y'all doing today? I hope that y'all having a great day today, or this mid to late afternoon. Some places it's mid evening. So I was wanting to do my homework, and that's what we're gonna do, the executive summary. Now, here's the taunting and daunting part. According to my teacher, I got some answers wrong, but I don't know how to retrieve those answers. He gave me the answers, and I don't know how to retrieve them. So I will use this executive summary based on the answers I've gotten. Because when I looked up the answers, when I looked up the answers that he gave me, it's the same equation that I put in. Last words, good luck. I already caught on to that. As long as this, you know, I don't know what to say. I'll tell y'all this. I got a plan, and I'm gonna tell you my plan. I'm gonna do my work, but you always get given a second chance if you fail at your grade. I will challenge my grade and urge them to look over my paperwork once this is said and done. If I don't get a B and I get like a C or something, I'm going to challenge it. Because that's not like me to sit up there. I'm an A student. I'm an A student. And now, because I don't know how he's about to grade, what he's looking for, any of that. So I'm okay. If I fail the course, I'm giving a second chance. And when push come to shove, I'll have financial aid, the last bit, and drain the shit out of financial aid to let me pay for my last class through financial aid and get my second masters. Since now, my, I have to... If I fail this course, I have to immediately write the VA hospital or the VA Education Department and tell them why. And if I can get compensated for that grade that was lost, then find another teacher outside of the military department. I just made an appointment with my advisor. And I think that it'd be best if I give the homework to someone else, someone other than a teacher that won't judge based on emotion, a third party to the situation. So I have an appointment with her on the 16th at 11:00 a.m. So now, we're gonna get to the good part, which is the performance. The performance of my work. I already looked up on Grok. I backtracked, and I looked up on Grok. You know, I looked up an executive summary. And this executive summary is going to be partially correct, but it's gonna have intel of why I think the numbers are running the way they should, they are, based on my findings and my work. It's not guaranteed that it's correct because the first part is messed up, but I can make it work. I can make it work. I'm going to correlate with my professor and make sure on the 20th... This is the only homework I'm doing, but on the 20th, when grades come in, how am I doing? If it's 80%, I'm fine with it. I can live with 80%. But if it's below, like in a 65 to 70%, you know, percentile, that can drop my GPS, GPA tremendously. I can live with a messed up, one messed up grade because it just shows. Just like it stopped. It shows. It go up, it go down. It was up, and then it's down. And you gotta figure out, well, what was that, 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 that problem that made it go down? Because I know that I... I'm not doing nothing to get on his bad side. I was just trying to be open and honest. I was just trying to be open and honest. Excuse me for a second, y'all. I have a code. I just took Day 12. And I hate this. I'm getting rid of the Day 12 before, probably a day or two when I feel really, really good. You know, that day before you really feel good. But my nose is bothering me. I may excuse myself off of here and then hop right back on. Just give me a second, okay? Okay. So that is the plan. The plan is to complete the work, but give it to someone. Someone has to have my work too so that they can know that I put my all into this. And there should be a mediator to this whole thing so it can execute smoothly. And you should have, not have two adults, one with a PhD, one with a master's degree, colliding in butting heads. So there should be a third party. And that's what I want to happen. A third party jump on board in... Yeah. The next solution would be just straight investigation. I chose to have him work with me, and we're gonna see if he works with me. You know, I'm still skeptical, skeptical because I'm like, I have the answers. I have the solutions that I made. Grok showed me that the solutions, the way I, the way it's set up, is just like I did it. And I have that recorded as well for my protection. So let's get started. I just had to talk about that for 10 minutes. So this will be recorded and monitored as we speak, and it will be for my protection in case I need to file a lawsuit for pain and suffering. Okay, so this is the executive summary. In the previous steps, you have reviewed the 10K, the Oracle's financial performance, and consider the context of the company beyond finance. Now, you will need to share your findings with Thomas by writing a one-page executive summary. Your financial analysis in which the workbook is right here... No, it's not right there. Where is it at? Right here, okay. Is it appropriate way to provide Thomas and the rest of me or to executive leadership with the main points of your analysis? Your summary should thoroughly explain your findings while remaining concise and easy to review. Additionally, the executive summary should do the following, using the questions in your workbook. Now, what I could do is look at his answers, but it wouldn't match. I could look at his answers and go off of his answers, but then that, that's just, you know... I don't think that's ethical. You know, go off of someone else's answers. That is supposedly to be valid answers, but then I think about, you know, well, what about my answers that I put, you know? This is what I found, and it's... If it wasn't for Grok Chat GPT, I would've found out on Google too. You know, I would not been able to proceed. And I still can't proceed. So I'm just basically finishing my work as is, as like a lemon type thing. So I'm finishing my work by looking at what I formed based on my thesis and my theories and my formulas that... And it sound weird, but I can show you and prove to you that there's no way to come up with a calculated answer. And since this is based on the homework, I'm not gonna go backwards and record that. But I did look it up, and Grok said what he said, which was he gave me the same formula that I typed in. So let's move forward. Your summary should thoroughly explain your findings while remaining concise and easy to review. Additionally, the executive summary should do the following, using the question in your workbook as a guide. Summarize the financial analysis conducted at each step in the project. So that's step one. And let's go to Grok. This is how he want. This is the way a basic executive summary should look, but this is what he wants. I'm gonna go down the bullet points of what he wants. Hmm, do you want this in a... document where it's... He didn't say that. So I still need to put the first... Let me see. APA. Scholars go for APA. I don't need a table of contents for this. So we're gonna take that out. I'm studying this right now. They want me to start from the beginning. Misses on the income. State the analysis. Before I go again. Words for 10. Through... File services. Research and development. With our God. And... Dollar. This means... What the things are. In these... Amount of revenue that is going up. Really, it's good. But they do properly. It's in the right direction. We... Now it's... Well... Total current assets. Mm. Current assets. It went down. Cash flow analysis. Let me go back. Okay. Sorry. So while I'm looking this up, you guys, um. Thank you.
Is it about to go down in Kirkland? I hear a plane. Sound like a military plane. I can't plug in the numbers. I don't want to anyway. I just wanna know what the formula is.
I'm trying to find the right elements or symbols or formulas to actually make this work. Now.
I don't know how to even get started with that. So this is how I'm gonna go around it. For every time that I asked him for a chance to get seen and try to follow up and have a appointment. I'm going to put in my paper, incorporate it and send it to my coordinator. That I've attempted. When I have a gap in between my grade because I haven't gotten seen yet. I'm gonna say it and write it and tell the truth. That's all I can do. You know, I cannot get this grade because you have not seen me yet. I cannot get this grade. You know, I can tell all the other things because you know, it's not hard, but it's not easy reading. A ratio analysis or cash flow sheet or balance sheet is not easy, you know. But if you know what you're looking for, you know, you should be able to have that, you know. And I'm gonna submit it still, but I'm gonna make sure I put that during this time I've reached out to you to get the answers. The proper way. So you know, and I shouldn't have to reach out to him at all. I barely reach out to my teachers at all, you know, and it's like we coordinate the teachers that I did have. We coordinated like me and Yang, you know. But with this situation, it's like, it's totally weird. So now to cover my butt, I'm just gonna go ahead and put the reason why I can't calculate this. Is because I have not seen an appointment with you yet. And if I have to recorrect it, fine, I'll take out the, what I said, but I still. That's only after you grade, which you grade, I'm trying to meet you before the grades go in. In the next seven to eight business days. Okay. So how would I start this? For trend and forecasting. You and I have not met again to correct the errors I must have made. I was wondering if we can arrange something due to the fact I have, I am having difficulties. But like I said, I'm learning about Excel, so it doesn't really matter to me. I'm still learning. I just hate when someone gives me the wrong answers. So that's the first part of the income statement analysis. Let's go back. Is it about to go down in Kirkland? I hear a plane. Sound like a military plane. I can't plug in the numbers. I don't want to anyway. I just wanna know what the formula is. So now to cover my butt, I'm just gonna go ahead and put the reason why I can't calculate this. Is because I have not seen an appointment with you yet. And if I have to recorrect it, fine, I'll take out the, what I said, but I still. That's only after you grade, which you grade, I'm trying to meet you before the grades go in. In the next seven to eight business days. Okay. So how would I start this? For trend and forecasting. You and I have not met again to correct the errors I must have made. I was wondering if we can arrange something due to the fact I have, I am having difficulties. But like I said, I'm learning about Excel, so it doesn't really matter to me. I'm still learning. I just hate when someone gives me the wrong answers. So that's the first part of the income statement analysis. Let's go back. Summarize the financial analysis conducted in each step of the process project. Identify and evaluate relevant revenues expenditures referring to your income statement analysis and considering which revenues and expenditures are most important to the potential contract. I could go from zero to ten off of this question. It's like this whole thing is geared to mine. This is something the CIA would do. I don't get, how would I bend for myself to figure out how to refer my income when I'm having difficulties with the income statement analysis because he hasn't wrote me yet. Summarize the financial analysis conducted in each step of the process. Project. Identify and evaluate relevant revenues, expenditures, referring to your income statement analysis and considering which revenues and expenditures are most important to the potential contract. I could go from zero to ten off of this question. It's like this whole thing is geared to mine. This is something the CIA would do. I don't get, how would I bend for myself to figure out how to refer my income when I'm having difficulties with the income statement analysis because he hasn't wrote me yet? Except one time. And what I mean by that is, let's be honest, he's wrote me three times. But he's hasn't like, once every two weeks and avoid the question? So I'm rerouting my situation. Because it, I cannot live with having a bad grade in my class. When I know it's gonna look bad for me. He has to live with himself to know that he is trying to destroy my college career. That, that right there, he has to deal with. But I'm not gonna be able to live with the fact of a bad grade knowing that I put in work. So, let's continue. Identify and evaluate relevant revenues and expenditures, expenditures, referring to your income statement analysis. Now, considering which revenues and expenditures are most important to this potential contract. That is something I have to get through my classwork of what I put in there. But if I don't get no direction, no light in the dark, you know, I'm gonna hit something. If, if there's, if it's totally dark in a room and I have no light to guide me, he's supposed to be that light. And if I have no light, I have to go way back in as a man cave dwell type thing and create my own fire. If y'all can visualize what I'm saying. Because all day I can say, oh, look, well, you know, I, I can go back and forth, but he's avoiding the question, which means that they want it to look like I failed on paper. This will drop from two As, two As to a F. But I'll submit it for the technology team. So when they look and do a thorough investigation of this situation, they will see that I submitted my homework. I cannot evaluate anything because you and I have not spoken over two weeks. I cannot see in the dark. I need your light. All I ask is that I get a fair chance at my grade. You gave me the answers and yet it's impossible to get the grade that you played the formulas. I asked you in the beginning if I needed a tutor. Maybe I should get a witness. A human witness. I need to make an appointment with Mark Lisa. That's as far as I need to go. All of these, just look at that carefully. Explain what the ratios in your ratio analysis convey about, I cannot do that without his help. Identify what Oracle's financial statements say about the cost effectiveness of their operations and what approaches. If any, the company uses to optimize cost effectiveness. Identify what Oracle financial statements say about the cost effectiveness of their operations and what approaches. The cost effectiveness of their operations. Excuse me for a second, you guys. I never walk off stat. Unless I'm like super hungry or something, something, but not like that. Okay. Okay. Toner assets. How much of an increase is that? They should make a rap song about this. Having a fight. Through words, emails. I had gone it. May thirty first, twenty twenty four. There is a what is it called? Net income. Uh, ten thousand four six seven F year. Eight thousand five hundred thirty four eight. Six four thirty twenty two. According to documents that's negative. No, really. Really, really, really. It's willy nilly. That don't look right. Let's just focus on the consolidated statements of cash flow and not on the percentage. According to documents. No. So. Um. I cannot. Give you the information. On ratios. Because we have not met. Up for a meeting about how to obtain. The formulas. Okay. So let's go backwards. And what approaches, if any, did the company uses to optimize cost effectiveness? Let's look at what cost effectiveness is. Uh, let's see. I think they met their objective, um, affordably. And how can you do something cheaper? Facebook don't think like that. That, that's the way business teach you. This is the way classroom teach you, but Facebook don't think like that. Yeah, I mean, they do think, did we meet our objective affordably? But how can we do this cheaper? You know, he's thinking ahead of the game and saying, how can I do this with money? But in a affordable way. You know, rare earth minerals. It's going for a lot. Rare earth minerals is the fight to the door. And Facebook is building this huge factory, this big factory. And, you know. Facebook. I don't wanna say they could be using rare earth minerals. But, um, if some of y'all didn't know, Facebook can track your heartbeat, your eye movement. And everything else. As we speak. So when Facebook does stuff like make glasses and stuff, you know, that has rare earth minerals in it. You know, uh. It has technology, CPU, GPU, the brain. The brain, and it's so beautiful, the way they, 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 they made it, the brain. So let's look at the chart. Only thing I can see by looking at this chart is whatever they're doing, Oracle. Every year, their revenue. Their income. Their net income. Their cash flow data. Their assets. Even liabilities. And equity. They all connect. And the positive ones, I see a positive flow influx. What I see is positive. Everything is yin and yang. And, uh, it, it is. Like for instance, equity, you know. One hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and seventy six. They can take, that's how much money, they can, they went from one hundred and thirty four to one hundred and forty. That's like a six percent increase. At all. Six thousand dollar increase. In the equity and liabilities. They're pretty low. It, it was up in two thousand and three, twenty three. By nine thousand and went back down to one hundred thousand. But in twenty two, it was ninety five thousand. Um. Assets. What kind of things you collect, like? Stocks and stuff. Um. Total assets is, um. One hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy six dollars. And their assets fall under cash. They have ten thousand in cash. What may, what is the big breaker of this whole thing? The tangible assets. Intangible assets. What's intangible assets mean? That's sixty two thousand, two hundred. No, hold up. Yeah, sixty two thousand, two hundred and thirty. What does intangible assets mean? Oh. That's beyond my room. So if I develop a computer software, that's an intangible asset. Go back. I see that there is a positive balance. Going and in the. Chart. From. Total revenue. Revenue to, uh. Hate when I have this. Hold on. Every minute is crucial. From total revenue to. This is. Earnings per share. They all have positive. Income. Ratios. Now. Their balance sheet. Twenty twenty three. Then. Income. Went up. Went down. Oh, wait. Two thousand two. Two. And I remember. Yeah. Income. Went. Uh. It's not called income though. What is it called? The liabilities. And then. Back. Down to one hundred. Okay. One of the cash, one, one. Their cash flow analysis. And net cash. Is. And in. Year before that is. Year before that is. Okay, um. Total revenue. Went up by three thousand seven. That shows that liabilities are going down. Everything else. Is inch the positive. Okay. What's the next? Excuse me y'all. I'm sorry, I'm like sick. When I get sick, my allergies add up. And I don't want to uh sneeze or cough or whatever. Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that, you guys. Okay. Explain, here we go again. Explain what the ratio is. I cannot explain. What I ratio is because. I need your help. Oh, I need you help. I need your help. I definitely gotta read over this afterwards. And then the weather is changing. Maybe I'm sick because of the weather change. Because it just the temperature. It drops. And I can deal with cold. It's just that when the temperature drops, it's a different type of drop, you know? It it's like, get ready. I would say the B word, but get ready, it's about to change and everybody gets sick. Every time the weather changes, you know, people get sick because, and then you feel it. So that could be it too. The chemicals, the chemistry in the air changes. Okay, estimate the key performance and forecast results. Referring to trends and forecasting section of the work. Okay, I can do this. Trends. Key performance and forecasting results referring to trends in forecasting section of the workbooks. Key performance and forecasting results. Key performance and forecasting results. I don't see nothing. I'm gonna try to answer it anyway. What is the growth forecast? Let's take a look. Take a look. Is it number? Let me stop, man. Uh anyway, um. What is the growth? So it's, it was a three thousand. Seven dollar increase. Then. Operation, it. It was a one thousand six hundred and sixty four increase. Blah 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 blah, blah 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 blah. Net income, one thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollar increase. I see for. See positive, a positive growth. In the next. Year due to the fact. That every sector from. Revenue. Total revenue. Into total operating expenses. Into net income. All are doing positive. None have been in the negative. With. With the growth. Rate going up. I foresee. Double the price. From three thousand seven dollars to six thousand. Or two dollars. For the year. With these statistics. If they do not meet that margin, then where. That it would most likely be in the. For. Range. Increases. Let's read this thing over. On the income statement analysis, a four thousand dollar increase was obtained through cloud services. Research and development went up by three hundred dollars. This means let's do this. I already see some errors. This mean that there is an increased amount of revenue that's going up. Yearly, which says the company is right in the right direction. Balance. Balance sheet analysis. The total current assets went down from twenty one. What? This means that the cash equivalents went down, but the total assets were still up. Current liabilities and non-current liabilities. This is an increase of three percent. Cash flow is. Ending on May thirty first and going up by two thousand. Dollars almost from twenty twenty three. Investing. Activities seem to decrease. Significantly from thirty six thousand to. Seven. Another option is to get a tutor. Yeah, you need to be shy. Don't say peekaboo. I'm gonna be all day doing this I'm not gonna say that because I know it's gonna divert back to the same day oh I probably messed up on it recommended solution I never put the recommended solution but I know he'll send it back to me but I did put the statement of the problem and where I find where I see it going so that's like a recommended solution they wanted to know how it would go I followed exactly what was asked of me the gaps that I could not fix were um I made sure I let him know I could not fix because I need his help okay guys so you can see that I tried I just wanted to let y'all know every day I just try I I think that this is the whole exercise and that's why he's getting either that or or that I don't know what to say but um I feel like he I don't wanna even talk about it I I just wish that we can work together in a bipartisan way you know that's it you know I don't wanna sit up there and lose a grade or lose go down a grade because of somebody the way somebody uh feels about me based on anything you know um so I guess I'll it's it's a sitting it it's a waiting game it's a waiting game to see you know what was gonna happen but I sometimes I'm just gonna have to reroute and do stuff that I normally wouldn't do when push come to shove if I have to eat that grade up then I will only you know the definitive answer comes from the intelligence inside of me when it actually happens we all have that intelligent sense of ourself where we we look to the future to see where is this gonna have me wound up based on how close the less information someone give you the more you don't know how far you're gonna go but the more information they give you the more you can see how to reroute it based on your findings and what you have that's what intelligence is about and that's what I know I possess so I'm just gonna sit up there sit back do my homework and what I cannot do I'll just explain it I cannot do this because you have not met up with me like I said how close your eyes you're in the dark try walking in the dark down the street you're not gonna get far without a dog or someone guiding you and this project is it is just like that so I don't know but um I hope that you guys take care um there's really nothing else to say other than I did my work and I'm just gonna wait on him to uh contact me and we will be doing another project tomorrow every day we're gonna do something every day you know I don't wanna amp up my stress but I say the stress level that I'm at I'm about a two and I was at a five um but when it first began I was at a five but now I'm at a two um I'm not gonna let it stress it 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 basically leveled itself out I'm not gonna let the stress bother me I even curse I curse you know and I say things I don't mean and you know but I I never you know do anything crazy doing something crazy is to 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 nag about something negatively and to execute that plan and so you know I I think it's therapeutic getting in you know e- even if you wanna scream in a pillow or something you know you're allowed to do I think screaming in a pillow is more therapeutic than screaming out in the bathroom cuz you're never safe in the bathroom you just never know but um so uh you know just screaming a pillow screaming a pillow and then that way whatever you mumble they can't make out what you mumble but once you say something or open airwaves because we are as we speak as you watch me as you don't watch me whatever you say is being monitored especially certain keywords so don't you know I try to refrain from those key words but it always seems just like earlier today I was at Walmart and I had my phone and I squeezed it and the alert system went off and I'm like okay what is going on I didn't even know I just unsqueezed it as soon as it I heard the alert and then I happened to look at my phone and it's like the police has been notified I said what the fuck I don't wanna call no cops you know y'all remember that Thomas the Hitman Hearns wha- whatever his name was and Martin he said I don't wanna fight no more I don't wanna call the police no more like I don't want them to think that I'm overstepping my boundaries like seriously I don't I I I really don't and and it's just like it just so happened but for some reason for some reason we are intertwined the government in me you know you may not like it it's fine some say off with her head some says witch some says other things but we are intertwined the government and me you know and um I can't help it I can't help it I did not mean I didn't even know that that called the police and it did you know um so I have some work to do behind the scenes it's six eleven you see how nine eleven intertwined intertwined I I don't make up the numbers only Father Time makes up the shit can't help it that I keep correlating with Father Time you know hey look you know it's about to be six twelve you know I like I don't I don't correlate with Father Time these days you know I wonder if there's you know it's always a guide to a story I wonder somebody something some being of this planet has access to time and can actually not control I don't know if they can control time but you can manipulate time I just showed you whoever looked at the time that can be manipulated imagine if 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 I my biological clock is going like boom walkers and 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 I can look like I know when the time is about to change based on my biological clock and how I manipulate it's an illusion but it's not the way I see time is like I don't know whoever controls time is playing around with me too because I'll sit up there and I'll say I beat you to three minutes like right now is six thirteen and I say I'll beat you to six sixteen and then I'll do a task and then it ends up six seventeen and then I have to say well I beat you to this you know um that's how I think I look at nature very differently than a typical person I look at nature very very differently than a typical person I'm very very spiritual you know um I am I look at nature from the wind blowing the like yesterday it was thunderstorming like God was talking to me it was literally kaboom boom 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 and I'm like I'm 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 just whatever I was doing I was ignoring the signs kaboom boom 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 and then all of a sudden the the freaking alarm goes off the freaking alarm it goes four times kaboom boom 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 and then all of a sudden the the freaking smoke detector goes off beep 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 and I get a and I started fanning it I started fanning it and I'm like there's no smoke in here what am I fanning it for so and so then I said what the hell am I gonna have to hear this for like thirty forty five minutes to two hours so so I'm just sitting up there just sitting there I'm like you know what let me listen to some Mozart and calmly watch um my stocks and that that's what I was doing and um it went off and lightning speed maintenance came and that was that man so um yeah it it was crazy the way that happened you know God was like wake up had I woke up when God told me to wake up because I've been sick lately for about a day and a half I wanna say I told y'all when and so when I tried to replenish my strength um God was telling me to wake up so I can do a show and I'm like and that's normally not what I do I don't sleep I don't sleep no more even when it I'm not online I am doing something I am doing something but this code has really crippled my energy levels and other factors too so had I woke up I would have had an hour to talk to you guys and I it was crazy so but yeah let me get off of here I'm you know it makes me feel really good knowing that y'all listening to my stories y'all are so shy y'all talk about me being an introvert you know y'all are introverts because none of y'all wanna sit up there and acknowledge me it is so hilarious man I you know just as y'all laugh at some of my jokes are at me more so than with me I laugh because I say you know why why hide who you are unless there's some omniness ominous or however you say in um reason you know and I know it's not that so the next reason would be that y'all are introverts and you don't want people to know who you are out there that watches me but guess what I say I say look at the cybersecurity that watches me the cybersecurity I kinda care more about that in the spectrum because I want them to know they're they're the key gatekeepers to censoring me or not censoring me they are the gatekeepers to censoring me or not censoring me based on each channel that I this is like my own television network I never thought I would have my own television network based on the the platforms that are out there I'm streaming like several seven eight different platforms and I never thought that it would lead me up to this I I you know I've had I can count on one hand how many dreams I remember and I've I've had so many different dreams like falling down and hitting the ground and my ankles and knees hurt you know when I was seven years old or six years old to dreaming about bricks that ended up at a shelter called make bets you know I don't even really dream like that no more but I I sleep but I don't dream and if I do dream in room sleep it's like it's like I can feel my energy levels coming back but I just don't dream and I don't take any medication for you know like melatonin or nothing like I used to but you know I don't know why I think when a vision happens and God wants me to really have a vision of about my dreams I will have a vision It's not good to dream too much or else you'll end up in a dream type state. You want to dream because you'll 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 leave your. You'll leave your dreams. You 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 wanna be in your dreams, you know. Dreams supposed to guide you. Dreams supposed to guide you. And yet, some of us want to dream twelve, fourteen hours. About what our life could be like. You don't need twelve or fourteen hours. For what your life could be like when you could be going out there making a dream happen now. And that goes for me too. So um. Some people just don't wanna get out of their dreams. You know, and I've met some people like that. Not, yeah, never mind, never mind. I shouldn't have said that. Because a lot of people are thinking I'm talking junk about them. No. If you have to go to sleep and you have to sleep for fourteen hours based on what. Your uh. Medical history is. Then go ahead. I I don't judge people, but don't. Don't get stuck in your dreams like inception. They actually created that. Don't get stuck in your dreams where somebody's tapping into your memory, trying to break your codes. And it can happen. They just, inception just told you. There is no firewall for our brains. That movie really got under my skin. That movie really got under my skin. But let me get off of here. So, bye y'all.